Good evening. Would everyone please rise with the prayer of pleasure allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to gather together this evening for the purpose of moving our school district forward. Help us to continue to work together to do good things for this community's children. We are grateful for the spirit of teamwork that abounds in our district and for the dedication of our staff as we prepare for the coming school year. We are truly a blessed school district and we are grateful for that blessing. These things we pray in your name.
Amen.
Ms. Fochette, would you lead us in the votes, please? Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, eternal, everlasting, God.
Roll call, please, Ms. Fochette.
Ms. Acevedo.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Mr. Isart.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mrs. White.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Fochette. First item on the agenda is a motion to incorporate the report of the July 2020 General Committee Meeting into the minutes of the July 2020 regular monthly meeting. There's a motion by Mr. Smith.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Warner. Any discussion or changes there being none, please cast your votes. Oh, wait, they're not voting. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. And just for the public's information, some of the machines aren't working, so that's why, because we're spread out.
We had to push out, right?
Right.
So you can't connect.
So that we could be socially distanced. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve changes to the strategic plan, action plan for 2016-2021. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So move.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Mr. England. Any discussion? And of course, we discussed this at the committee meeting, and we have Ms. Horton with us tonight. Thank you, Ms. Horton, for being here and working on this. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item are the personal changes for the month of July 2020. And just to give you a moment, all the additions from the committee meeting are highlighted in yellow.
And just a reminder, we need a motion for the leave without pay.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fochette. And we have a retirement, Gail Colato, who is retiring from Tris Middle. We just want to thank Gail for her years of experience and dedication to our school system and to all the students that she has taught, so we want to wish you a very happy retirement and thank you again for your service.
Ms. Isart.
Mr. England.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we want the leave without pay.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion by Mr. England to grant the leave without pay, and there is a second by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, please cast, I'm sorry, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
And I would like to just add with Ms. Colato, she's been a longtime teacher with us, I've communicated with her, just excellent as an English teacher at Tris Middle School, a very, very good person, too. And she's going to be sorely missed, but she will be there volunteering and doing as she always does and work in the best interest of our students, so while it's a well-deserved retirement, I know that her heart is still with the kids, especially at Tris Middle School.
Thank you, Ms. Fochette. And also retiring, we have Clarence Barrow from Chalmette High School, and we want to thank Clarence for his many years of service to Chalmette High and all the good works that he did there with the staff and our students, and we want to wish you a happy retirement also, Clarence. You want to add anything?
No, he's been a faithful custodian for many years at Chalmette High School, and I think many times when you did go to night activities and you would see Clarence there, so I know he'll be missed at Chalmette High as well.
Thank you, Ms. Fochette. Okay, anyone else? All righty. Next item on the agenda is the motion to approve the 2020-2021 transportation routes. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So move.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Smith.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. White. And we did review all the routes, and Ms. Canor told us that it could be another changing thing depending on, you know, how the year goes, but the routes are in place, and we want to thank her and Transportation Department for always doing a fine job. Okay, anyone else? Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, next item is a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for student athletic insurance for 2020-21. There was a recommendation by the committee. There's a motion by Ms. Lemoine, seconded by Ms. Jackson, and Mr. Fernandez is here. Are there any questions? Or Mr. Fernandez? Okay, there being none, and we did discuss this at the committee meeting. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Okay, next item is a motion to approve Policy EBBI. There was no recommendation from the committee because we did not address it at the time. Ms. Fochette, do you want to say anything on this?
Yes. Last Tuesday, BESI adopted minimum guidelines for schools throughout Louisiana and reopening procedures. Incorporated into policy into Bulletin 741. That was done at the Tuesday meeting at the same time that we were meeting as a committee meeting, if you remember. Those policies were mandated for BESI to adopt by a piece of legislation that we had discussed at a prior meeting. So one of the mandates in that piece of legislation was that local school districts then would adopt those minimum guidelines and then eventually establish procedures that would be in place for each individual school. So as you can see, this is just the general policy, which is a public health emergency, and in that last paragraph, it designates that we adopt the policies that BESI put forth in Bulletin 741, Louisiana Handbook for School Administrators for the 2020-21 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Fochette. And the new policy reads as such, "When a declared public health emergency exists, the St. Peter Parish School Board shall grant the superintendent broad authority to develop, implement, and maintain administrative regulations and procedures necessary to protect employees and students from the conditions giving rise to the declared emergency, and the development and implementation of necessary administrative regulations and procedures for safely reopening of schools or maintaining the safety of employees and students when schools are open during a health emergency. The superintendent and the staff shall rely upon the practices, guidelines, and suggestions of the Louisiana Department of Education in coordination with the Department of Health and Hospitals. The St. Peter Parish School Board adopts and incorporates, as if set forth fully herein, the provisions of Chapter 4 of Bulletin 741, Louisiana Handbook for School Administrators for the 2020-2021 school year, and shall abide by the health and safety standards included therein, and this new policy will be adopted July 2020." Does the board wish to join in a joint acclamation on this new policy? Okay, any discussion on the policy or questions at this time? Okay, all in favor of joint acclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, next item is a motion to adopt a resolution to obtain special counsel for opioid-related claims, and there was no recommendation from the committee because this is an added agenda item also. Ms. Fochette?
Okay. I got a phone call from Walter Legay, who has handled some of our legislation before, as we well know, in the BP oil spill and some other cases. As I guess you've heard in the news, Purdue Pharmaceuticals is in a bankruptcy proceeding. They had manufactured the drug Oxycontin. And in that class action suit that is developing around that particular bankruptcy claim, local governmental bodies share or potentially share in a piece of that settlement because of its effect on communities. The deadline for filing a claim, it was really this week. Until very recently, no one felt that school systems across the different states might be eligible, but we in Louisiana are independent political subdivisions. There was an economist, one economist, that did some projections that potentially, that stated that there could be a potential claim for school systems. So in an abundance of caution, I mean, if we could, if by some chance, and as he described it to us, it is a long shot, but if it's some chance that we may prove that there has been a claim that school systems would be eligible for, that filing had to be done this week. So we're asking at this point to adopt this resolution to allow Mr. Legay on our behalf to file the claim this week, and it's based on a contingency fee of 25%. So if there would be any potential suit, any potential settlement that we would have access to, then his fee would be contingent, he would get a 25% contingency fee for doing the filing and the paperwork. So we ask that you approve this resolution tonight.
Okay, we had some questions. Mr. England?
Thank you. There will be no cost to this board whatsoever?
Not, right, not unless there is...
Because he's saying 25%.
25% of anything we would receive.
Right.
Correct.
But there's any outside...
No.
Okay.
Nothing that, you know, unless we actually got monies, received monies.
Okay, this one makes positive, sure, there's no problem. Thank you.
Mr. Warner?
I think Mr. England, I mean, Mr. Egan was next.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Egan, I didn't see your hand. Mr. Egan?
Mr. England brought up, and this is something, review of the contract, I didn't see anything for any expenses, and that could be substantial. And of course, contingency, for those that may not know, probably we all do, he doesn't recover anything, or we don't recover anything. It doesn't cost us for that part. But there could be sufficient, a tremendous amount of cost involved, depositions, going to depositions, any experts, et cetera. So there could be costs that could be put on us if that's... I'd ask that, I am for this resolution with the exception, I would like it to be changed to just to say that at no cost to the school board, just as Cliff brought up. That's basically, and I have no opposition to it, the fee is reasonable, okay?
Some...
That's a reasonable fee. And so that's it, as far as I'm concerned.
So you want to add that to this resolution, Mr. Egan?
Yes, I'd have an amendment.
To clarify it?
Yes, just to clarify the setting, we will incur no cost as a result of taking this action in court.
And you're accepting the resolution as motion with that addition?
And I'm accepting the resolution as written, with that exception putting into it.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Egan that we accept this resolution with the addition of the no-cost clarification, and there's a second by Mr. England. Any further discussion, Mr. Egan? Did you have anything else?
No, nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then Mr. Warner next.
I was just going to make a motion that we adopt a resolution, but I think Mr. Egan has made that motion with his amendment.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warner.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Long?
Well, I think I understand what Mr. Egan is saying, but this is a class action, correct?
Yes.
So that means the, all the entities that's in the class, if there's expenses, would they share the expenses?
I think, and I think Mr. Egan would be as much more an expert than I am on this, but I think the class shares the expenses, and then after the expenses are taken off, because there will be expenses incurred across the board. So when we say at no cost to us, I'm assuming you mean at no additional cost if we've received no funds?
That's correct, exactly.
Okay, but the costs associated with the suit, if we do receive funds, those costs will be taken off before we actually get the monies that we're entitled to or that we may get in the settlement. But it would not be a cost to us if we don't receive anything.
All right, okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? And for the public record, the resolution reads as such, "A resolution to obtain special counsel for opioid-related claims, whereas opioid use and issues and treatment related thereto have become a huge social problem locally and nationally, and whereas various entities are attempting to recover past and future damages associated with this opioid epidemic, and whereas the St. Peter Parish School Board in the past years and in the future has been and will be affected by the opioid crisis, and whereas the St. Peter Parish School Board should attempt to recover its damages, past and future, associated with this epidemic, and whereas the St. Peter Parish School Board wishes to retain special legal counsel, and whereas the St. Peter Parish School Board recommends the appointment of Legay and Shaw and associated attorneys and paralegals. Legal, Legay and Shaw are experienced attorneys with the requisite expertise to render special counsel services and represent the St. Peter Parish School Board regarding opioid litigation. The St. Peter Parish School Board hereby resolves that a necessity exists for the employment of special counsel, and the St. Peter Parish School Board ratifies and approves the employment of Legay and Shaw and associated attorneys and paralegals as special counsel for the St. Peter Parish School Board in the above described matters, and to take any and all actions necessary to pursue any right or claim of the St. Peter Parish School Board related to the opioid crisis and litigation. The compensation authorized to be paid shall be on a contingency basis of 25% through a retainer agreement." The resolution has been submitted to a vote. The vote thereon will be as follows, and the resolution will be declared tonight at the regular meeting of the St. Peter Parish School Board, where a quorum of the members being present and voting here in Chalmette, Louisiana, and an addition that this representation will bear no cost to the St. Peter Parish School Board unless there is some gain of, from the suit, from the class action suit. Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Fochette, just real quick, the attorney, this would fall within all the attorney generals' standards and requirements, correct? Correct. Okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay, there being no further discussion, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay. Next item is an update on the opening of school, and we have had a request to speak on this item before we go into discussion, and as by our board policy, we will hear anyone who wants to speak on the item prior to the discussion. And tonight, we have Henry Leo, who would like to speak on the item. Good evening, please come to the podium.
Sorry, first time ever speaking in front of the school board, so...
Welcome.
Excuse the note. Good evening, everyone. I come to you today with a sense of gratitude for allowing me to address some serious concerns I have about the reopening of our schools. So that everyone understands where my concerns are coming from, I'll start by saying that I'm a teacher at Chalmette High. I'm going into my sixth year of teaching. I've grown to love this community, and I've devoted countless hours and years of my life to the students of this parish. I've been a mentor for new teachers, I've participated in summer arts programs, I've sponsored clubs, I've volunteered for graduations, football games, food drives, school committees, and so much more. I say this not to exalt my efforts, but to demonstrate the love and passion I have for the students in our community. In the wake of a global pandemic, many schools all over the nation have decided to continue virtual learning until we have a better control of the virus that has killed over 150,000 Americans and 650,000 people worldwide. Meanwhile, many school districts, including our own, have decided to do the exact opposite. I would like to recognize, though, the need that our community has regarding our working parents. I would also like to recognize the jeopardy we would be putting our federal funding in should we keep school buildings closed for virtual learning. Lastly, I would like to recognize that our superintendent has been working closely with health experts to determine the safest practices to keep our students and school staff safe from contracting the virus. However, not a single one of these issues is worth the lives of public educators. No matter the amount of safety measures the school board establishes, our school staff runs an immense risk by going back into the school buildings. Many of our staff, sorry, I'm sorry, many of our staff members are over the age of 60 and/or have compromised immune systems. One of those members is our legendary principal, Mr. Wayne Warner. All of you are aware of the things that he's done for our community, and it baffles me to think that as a school board, we're okay with putting this man's life at risk. Are you all at peace with the idea that he could die of a preventable death? If this question makes you as uncomfortable as it makes me, imagine how comfortable we'll be if this thought becomes a reality. Before I yield my time, I'd like to address the concerns and actualities I brought up in the beginning. Yes, parents need us, but rather than opening our schools, we should focus our efforts on assisting those parents. We risk school funding, but our community is resilient and resourceful. Year after year, our credit union reports on their ability to make great investments. We've received funding from donations and community organizations like the Muro Foundation. We're not alone in this. As for health advice, as of the advice for health experts, we should continue working closely with them, but with ethical standards. Putting people's lives at risk for what feels like a big science experiment is extremely unethical. If you truly want us to believe that you are committed to prioritizing the safety of our staff and students, then please allow our schools to continue educating virtually. It's the absolute safest measure you can take. It's also the most efficient. I want to be back with my students, but not at the expense of people's lives. Please help me preserve the lives of our valuable staff and students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leo. We appreciate it, and thank you for your service to our students. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? Who may not have signed up? Okay, thank you. We will now go on to the agenda item and have discussion, update on the opening of school. Ms. Fochette?
Okay, you know, let me start by saying with the obvious. It's a very, very difficult time, I think, for all of us, not only in this community, but across the country. As we grapple with decisions that have to be made in terms of community functions, in terms of school reopenings, in terms of how we live, I mean, everyone has a different opinion of how we should approach each and every one of these issues. The state of Louisiana has put together a statewide reopening plan that we've talked about extensively over the last few meetings. At the direction of the legislature, you know, the BESI and Louisiana Department of Education has developed what they call Strong Start, which are reopening guidelines for schools. This was not done in isolation with just educators present. This plan was put together by the, a task force which spanned all areas of the community within the state. The Office of Public Health took a very, a lead position on this reopening plan. At the BESI meeting two weeks ago, when there was discussion and adoption of this, there were three medical professionals present who had input into the plan. Dr. Joe Kanter, who is the medical director for Region 1, who is our medical director here in the metropolitan New Orleans region, Dr. Leon Finger, who is the head of the emergency and pediatric medicine at Children's Hospital, and Dr. Bruce Lanaires, who is the chief of emergency and pediatrics at Ochsner Foundation. Those three gentlemen presented before the BESI board and talked about the aspects of the plan and said that if guidelines, the guidelines were followed, they felt confident and safe, or they felt confident that we would have a safer environment within the schools as anywhere within the community. And they felt, Dr. Finger said, his three children would be going back to the schools under this particular plan as well. Now, is it a perfect plan? Nothing is a perfect plan. Can anyone guarantee that nothing will happen or that this virus will not spread among people within schools as well as community? No, no one can guarantee that. Unless, I think unless we all go back to a stay-at-home order where we go nowhere, where you don't go to the ballpark, where you're not going to any kind of social gathering, any functions, that would be the, I think when we were under that particular order, you saw a decrease in the spread of this virus. The more people are stepping out, the more spread will occur. Will, if we open schools in person, will we expect cases of COVID to be present in the schools? Yes, we will. They'll be present in the community, they'll be present within the schools. I had a conversation with Dr. Kanter earlier this morning because he and the other medical directors had put out calls imploring people within communities to social distance, to wear their masks, and to not participate in large functions, and to try to do what was, I guess, the social conscience of communities and for the betterment of our kids and our communities in the state. And I asked him point blank, I said, Joe, I said, if you, you know, if you had to make the call, what would you do right now? And his answer to me, I said, is it safe? He said, Doris, he said, if you follow the guidelines which are set forth, yes, it is safe to go back. He said, will you have cases? Yes, you will have cases. He said, your biggest issue will be, are you willing to deal with a disruption? And you're able to deal with a disruption? Because when those cases exist, if there's a case of a student or if there's a case of a teacher, an adult, there are protocols to follow. There will be quarantining, possible isolation, and those procedures need to be followed. He said, "But it's—you know, it's a call of every community." School systems throughout the state are taking different actions. Some in the surrounding areas—we have one in the surrounding area that is not going to do anything until after Labor Day. And that particular school system will have nothing until after Labor Day and have— and have adjusted their calendar, cut the Thanksgiving holidays, Christmas holidays, Mardi Gras, Easter, lengthen the school day to get in the required minutes and such. So they've done a complete change of the calendar. I asked Dr. Kanter, I said, "Well, you think two or three weeks would make a difference?" He said, "You're gonna be facing the same thing in two or three weeks." He—we talked about, did he think this would decrease? Is this gonna plateau? And, you know, everybody is talking or answering in their best, I guess, opinion at the time, based on the facts and the data that they have. He says they're seeing somewhat—it's been a steeper rise, that rise is lessening, it's not quite as steep, it's becoming a little more linear, and I don't want to use the word plateauing out because I'm in a—I don't want to speak to the medical professionals, but the steepness is decreasing. Don't know what's gonna happen next week if cases continue to rise. You know, right now, we have—as our reopening plan—that our teachers are coming back on Monday, the 3rd. We've increased an additional couple of days of PD to the 7th and the 10th, starting on the 11th for K to 8. We have 25% of the kids coming who have chosen in-person learning, 25% coming on Tuesday, the 11th, a different 25% on Wednesday, a different 25% on Thursday, and the last 25% on Friday to get the kids and the adults on campus familiar with the procedures, to see what's working, what's not working, and to make adjustments with a smaller group of kids present—small—with the—with the adults. Then, on the following Monday, the 17th, then all students coming, and that's in the K to 8. At the high school beginning on the 11th, implementing the hybrid schedule where it's an A/B schedule, so that the students would be on campus two days a week, two days with the virtual—with that split A/B, A/B, and then on the fifth day doing—zooming in with their—with their teachers, so that on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we'd have half of the student body there each day and none of the students there, you know, on a Friday. So we're trying to take precautions with limiting numbers of students, either on campus or within the individual classrooms. Now, we've offered a virtual option to parents, and we closed that out yesterday about—right about 1,900, and we have to clean up the data because, you know, some people—but about 1,900 students have applied for the virtual option, which will be close to getting close to 25% of the student body. So we're seeing families looking at 25% of our students who want to take advantage of 100% virtual option, with 75% of the families choosing the in-person option. So what we need to do now, within the next few days, is to pull out the total virtual kids from the numbers and counts, and that'll further decrease the in-person size of the individual classes. And then that virtual option, as we discussed before, is not going to be directly taught by our teachers. It'll be—we're using the software and the online platform with Edge Annuity for the whole K to 12. Six through 12 is actual Edge Annuity software, which is being used by many school systems throughout the state. And then it's companion piece for K to 5. Those are video lessons, the kids will go on, they can move at their own pace with it, there'll be a set body of work that they must do, it'll go through, give them specific assignments, take the assessments. But what we will have to do is have people monitor the attendance and the completion of those kids, because they're our kids. I mean, they're gonna be a part of our school system, just exercising a different option. And they will return to in-person learning at some point in the future. So they are our children, and we need to follow up and make sure that their progress is continuing. Now, with the 25%, we're in the process now of looking at—because, to be perfectly honest, if you remove 25% of the student body, what does that do to the staffing? You know, then you've got additional people. So we're looking at the possibility of some of our people possibly monitoring the progress of those kids. So in the next two days, we're gonna be working through that particular process. We have—when we talked about the relationship with Dr. Kanter, who's our medical director, he's pretty much on speed dial with us in terms of if there's a particular situation, we as educators—if it's a medical situation, we don't make that decision. You know, we will call him, and he and his staff will advise us on what to do in each specific case. And we have the little flow charts and the guidelines to follow—if this occurs, this is what we do. However, what we are also doing, and I am finalizing—I had talks—finalizing talks today with—you know, with Ochsner. They have entered—and they're entering into agreements with the Jefferson Parish School System, St. Tammany Parish School System, and with us, in terms of having our nurses at each school having direct contact. So for example, child comes in, presents with a fever of 101. We know what we do in terms of our—what our procedures will be, but we will call them directly, they'll walk our nurses through and our administrators through what we're going to do, they will advise the parents what to do, and they, if they wish, will set up appointments for the children. Our staff members, they have promised us the expedited testing. For example, if—if we have reason to believe, or any of our—you know, people have symptoms or whatever, that they will set it up and move them to the top of the—top of the line, if you want to put it that way, or the head of the line, for testing and consultation with us. So in terms of the safety and the medical procedures, we're working directly with Dr. Kanter, who's the Office of Public Health Regional Director here, and we're going to enter into that agreement—you know, I've talked with some of y'all about it—that agreement with Ochsner. Kim Keane, who's the director, administrator of the hospital here, has been working very closely with us in getting that set up, and has been very helpful in that regard. I wanted to bring in, just for a minute, I've got Jason Dewey here with us tonight. I'd like him to go through a little bit before we discuss other options, just exactly what procedures in terms of sanitation, disinfecting, what we've been doing with the schools and such, and Jason can answer any of these questions and outline what purchases we've made and what we've done. When the kids—and just before Jason starts, for the bus transport—you know, transportation routes, you know, the guidelines talk about the—we're in Phase 2, 50% occupancy, so we can't put more than 33 kids, you know, in the bus. Julie Ginnart has worked out and is working out those schedules, pulling out the kids that have exercised now the virtual option and trying to redo some of these as we speak. But there'll be the hand sanitizing stations on the bus. Students are supposed to enter, you know, if they're third grade on up with their masks on, they'll be—have to sanitize their hands as they get on the bus before they sit down. Then they arrive at the school. Once they arrive at the school, we're gonna do the initial temperature checks. Now, the—how we're gonna—we're gonna do that may vary slightly at each school, but it's been recommended by the health officials to do it, to make sure you have—get all of the students with the temperature checks and not have them congregating outside and bunching up, that we bring them in directly into their first period or their classroom and take it at that particular point. So, Jason, if you want to kind of describe what it'll look like in terms of the sanitizing, temperature checks, water fountains, what we've done, all the different procedures we've gone through.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. I'll just go through, you know, what we have in place, and of course, at that point, field any questions, concerns, or thoughts at that point. First and foremost, we're focusing on, as Ms. Voce mentioned, hand sanitizer, sanitizing of hands, in addition to always having, you know, soap and hand washing stations available, as we always do. That is not an issue that's still there, but we're gonna bring in—at this point, I have, over the course of this week and prior to school beginning, we're gonna be bringing in about 600 hand sanitizing stations across the district. That's, you know, amongst all schools. We want to make sure that there's an abundance of those in place, and that at any point, anywhere in the building, for the most part, that a student can get to a hand sanitizing or faculty member, visitor, what have you, can get there and sanitize their hands as needed. We'll have some at the main entrances, obviously, for visitors, and of course, spread throughout the schools in high-traffic areas for our students and faculty as well. Also, we will have hand sanitizer dispensers on each bus, so as the children come onto the bus, that they have a spot immediately to get that hand sanitizer and—then proceed to their seat and such. So we've got that piece well-covered with an abundant supply, and we will be able to replenish that throughout the course of the year. That won't be a problem, we've managed to line that up and have that taken care of. We are also providing each teacher in their classroom with at least a 16-ounce bottle of the hand sanitizer that we can then also replenish if necessary. And then beyond the hand sanitizer, the other big piece of this, obviously, is disinfecting surfaces. We still have all of the disinfectants we've previously discussed as we started this, which is our—you know, DS1 disinfectant, which, you know, our EPA approved and rated for all of these uses that we need during the COVID-19 crisis, obviously. We will have that, and we will have a couple of different methods to apply them. We have, you know, normal spray bottles, which can be used and things can be wiped down in a traditional sense. We have regular pump sprayers that can—we can use to kind of broadcast that disinfectant over larger areas. And then we've also invested in what they call electrostatic sprayers, which will allow us to go through quickly in our buildings, but also provide an electrostatic spray. It's—it's the same sanitizer, it's nothing magic, it's just the way that it puts the the spray out. We can refine it down to what the—they call the dwell time is for that sanitizer. So if that sanitizer is required to sit for, say, 10 minutes to be fully effective, we can set it so it mists at a point that it will dry within that 10-minute window, be fully effective, but not just sit there and be wet for long periods of time, so we can let students and staff return to that area rather quickly after it's been sanitized. So we have those methods to apply all of our disinfectants as well, and no—no concerns with the supply of those disinfectants over the year either. We'll be able to keep those in stock and readily available. We're gonna provide that same sanitizer to every teacher and across every classroom as well, just for incidental needs and things that may arise just over the course of a class, where a custodian may not be immediately present, but of course, the custodians will be doing the lion's share of that and supporting it as well. The PPE side of things, we have in stock and ready to go as of today, took delivery of them, enough of the cloth masks, similar to what many of you guys are wearing right now, to provide to every student and employee in our district. So that is not a problem. And then I have roughly 75,000 of the surgical masks there to utilize as well. Obviously, those being more of a disposable nature and not as reusable as the cloth masks are. So we have that for PPE, and we have enough thermometers to supply and continue to supply every homeroom across our district, so that we can continue to do all of our temperature checks in addition to the classrooms. We can supply it to front offices for checking in visitors and staff, kitchen areas, so Ms. Bloom's staff can also utilize those, and we can provide them to any other staff that, you know, the need may arise for at that point. And we have no issues with any of—you know, like our normal antibacterial soaps and things like that for our restrooms and hand washing stations, that has not been a problem. Early on in this whole situation, unfortunately, there was a lot of items—or there were a lot of items, excuse me, that were difficult to find all of a sudden, just because of the rush and sort of the panic. That has become better for us now, and we are able to secure a lot more of those items and a lot larger supply. That being said, that touches on all of the major, you know, pieces. We, you know, have schedules in place, and we're coordinating with custodial staff as well as principals to have regular disinfection done, in addition to, of course, our normal cleaning of our buildings every day. I mean, we're thoroughly cleaning buildings as—a rule of thumb, even when, you know, this crisis wasn't upon us, but we will be disinfecting regularly as well, which—which is to say, at a minimum, every time a classroom changes or a major area is occupied by a different student or or individual. So we will be coming through on regular schedules between custodial staff, maintenance staff, in some cases, perhaps teachers or office staff, and disinfecting those areas very regularly. So that covers everything that we have set up, and if there are any questions or, you know, concerns, please let me know, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey.
Thank you.
I had Mr. England.
Yes, I have a couple of questions for Ms. Voce to start off with. For the 1,900 students with the virtual learning in that, Ms. Voce, if some of these students wanted to come back to in-classroom learning, how do they proceed with that?
What we've done with K to 8, we've informed the parents that if they choose the virtual option, it's a nine-week choice. So if they choose it, they're in it for the first nine weeks. For high schools, because of the Carnegie Unit Credit, it's going to be for the semester, which will be from now until December, the end of the first semester. So K to 8 is a nine-week commitment, high school would be a semester commitment.
Right. Okay, thank you on that issue. What about the second issue I have is, what about the lunch? I know where it's—they still put up our school system, but we gotta nurture these these children, all right? Are we providing lunches?
Talking about the virtual?
Yes.
Yes. Lunch will be available if they wish to pick up, and we'll have a mechanism by which they can then drive through and pick up a lunch and a to-go breakfast.
Will they have to be with the parent, or the—
It'll be—they have to eat it. The parent can come to pick it up, the child doesn't have to be there, but the parent must show the child's ID.
Okay.
So it's not like the summer feeding program. There are different regulations in the regular school year than it is in the summer feeding program nationally. So with the—for the regular school year, we have to make sure that it's—the meal is going to the child.
Right. That's—that's what I was trying to get to. I thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. De—
Mr. Long?
Well, before the gentleman spoke tonight, I did have some concerns myself about the early start, but—and especially after listening to the governor today at 4:00. He—he said the state of Louisiana is number one in the country per capita in new cases. And I know St. Bernard, in May, we were getting two or three cases a day, and now we're getting 20 to 25 new cases a day. And I'll take this off. And that's why I had some concerns. I was planning on coming in and asking the board to maybe delay starting. But it sounds as though, according with Jason, we're just saying, our our teachers will have plenty of PPE, and if Dr. Kanter says that it won't make a difference if we wait a few weeks, we'll be in the same boat.
Well, unless we find a vaccine, the the virus will still be present, and the threat of spread is still there. Now, he can't predict in two or three weeks how intense that spread will be, but it will still be the same situation.
And the governor did have some encouraging news, you know, he didn't want to call it a plateau, but he did say it looks like it's leveling off a little bit.
That's what I was told, yeah.
I think personally, I would rather have waited a few weeks, a couple of weeks at But I know that would throw, you know, throw our calendar off a little bit. I mean, if we were to be hit with a hurricane right now, we'd probably maybe lose a week or two, just a minor hurricane, but, but I'm confident that Doris is doing everything she can to protect our teachers, because that's our main concern. The students are less likely to develop anything major and I think the jury's out on whether they can really transmit. But, so I guess my point is, I was planning on asking for a delay tonight, but if it doesn't make any difference, if delaying it, and it sounds like we've got a good participation with the virtual, with a lot of people wanting to do the virtual, along with the precautions that we're taking, I think it's, I'm comfortable in going ahead with our original plan to, as you described earlier, Doris. But, but thank you.
You know, what we were told too, in terms of transmission by children. Now, nobody knows for sure. The data, what they're telling me, what OPH is telling me, Office of Public Health, the data to this point is showing, when they've taken daycare data, early childhood data, data from other countries that have gone into school situations more extensively, say, than we have at this point, that children under 10, that the child-to-child transmission or child-to-adult transmission is minimal. Now, you can have adult-to-child, but child-to-child for under 10, child-to-child or child-to-adult is minimal. Now, the older the child gets, you know, teenager and such over 10, then that would be the same basically as an older person. So that was one of the reasons with the, I know we have some pre-K through second grade teachers who are a little concerned that students would not be wearing the masks under the third grade. That was one of the rationales that they looked at. Now, third grade on up with the mandatory mask wearing, that's why that precaution is in place because of that particular data. Now, could, anything can happen, I mean, I'm not an expert nor do I pretend to be the expert. I'm just relating what the consensus is from the, you know, the doctors at OPH that deal with the, in close contact with the CDC. And the latest guidelines from the CDC is what we would be following. I wish I could come and say, we're totally sure everything is fine or that if we wait three weeks, hey, no problem, we wait three weeks and then everything will be fine. But we, nobody can make that prediction or that guarantee. Now, if, and I just want to assure everybody, you know, if numbers continue to decline, if things get worse, then we revisit this next week and we may make a different decision. But at this point, we feel this is the best course of action. Now, we've talked to our principals and administrators extensively. I know that some schools have had more contact with staffs than others. I know some schools that have been bringing in their leadership teams and going through different procedures and making adjustments and such. And the sad part about it from an educational point of view, we're telling our teachers now to do things that for years, we've been telling them not to do. You know, we're telling our teachers to distance themselves from their students, you know, which, you know, hurts your heart as an educator, you're up there, okay, stand back, distance yourself from the students, stay that six feet apart. You can walk up and down an aisle, but don't stop and connect with a student for any length of time. Be sure the masks are worn. Always be conscious, because you have to, every adult has to do those protection procedures and be responsible for themselves and within the classroom. With the older kids, it's a little easier to do, because the kids, you can reason with them more, talk with them more, they understand. It's more difficult with the younger children, because, well, we all know how much more difficult it is with the younger children to enforce those particular guidelines. But, so we're telling our teachers to maintain that distance, be sure they're always wearing their masks. We're trying to provide for the kids as normal, a learning environment as we can, under the conditions. Kids will have recess and go outside, they will have the electives, you know, art and music and PE at the elementary level. We're keeping them in their static groups so that they don't intermingle as the day progresses. So they're going to go to recess with their group, they're going to eat with their group, they're going to have their art and their music and their PE with that group. We're not going to overlap at the elementary level. And at the, with the older kids, we're trying to do it with, less with the static groups because of the change in the different courses that you're taking and do that more by maintaining distance and at the high school, reducing numbers of students in the building at any given time. So I guess what I'm saying is, we're following, if we proceed with this, you know, we're following the guidelines set up by the state of Louisiana that have been worked out with the Department of Ed and the Office of Public Health. And we're doing everything in our power to make sure that our teachers and our employees have everything that they need in terms of any protective gear that they would need, any sanitizer, anything, and we would ask them to make sure that if they do need anything, they let us know right away, because we're there to provide. Jason Dewey has done an outstanding job in getting all this together. John Ram at, over at Parish Government, who's our local OEP director, has been an unbelievable resource and help to us and is working hand in hand with us. Kim Keen over at Ochna has done the same thing and we're going to enter into an even stronger agreement with them so that from a medical standpoint, they're going to be there advising us and consulting with us at every move. And we have direct communication with Dr. Kanter, who really is the lead medical director, regional medical director in the state. You see him everywhere. So we're taking every, I guess, every possible precaution that we can. So, you know, we feel that we are going to be able to provide a safe environment for our kids. We can, and I don't want people to misunderstand and say, if we do this, we will never see a case of COVID in our schools. That's not going to happen, there will be cases. There'll be cases in the school, but there are cases in the community. And there are going to be cases, I guess, until we find a vaccine or a treatment at some point. Is that it, Mr. Long?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jackson?
I was just going to ask for some clarification from you guys about how, a little bit more info about how the middle and the high schools are going to work, with them switching classes? Like, are we going to be staggering change times? Like, are we trying to keep the same groups of kids together through the day? Like, how exactly is that going to work?
At the middle school level, it's going to be a little more controlled. The, two of our three middle schools had previously sectioned off their buildings, like it had a sixth grade hallway, a seventh grade or an eighth grade section. One of the middle schools had worked through their classrooms prior to this by subject area, having all the English together, or the math or the science. So we told that particular school they had to change the configuration and put sixth in one area, seventh and eighth. Now, realizing that there are electives that kids will move to. But for the core areas at the middle school, when a child goes, that group of kids is going to move primarily. I mean, it's not going to, it's not going to be an absolute static group in the middle schools, but they will move to English, math, social studies, the core areas within that same small area, that little hallway area. We're not going to allow the use of lockers. They're not going to be dressing out in PE and go into locker rooms with changing of clothes or anything. And the reason we don't want to do the lockers is we don't want the kids congregating in the hallway. So the principals and the teachers that they have worked with to establish those procedures are setting up things within classrooms, you know, where these books will be here or these can be stored here. So the intent is, as kids move from one class to the other, that there's not time to stop, go to lockers, congregate and have, I guess, a social, now, they only have three minutes to change, but kids can do a lot in three minutes. Like, three minutes is an eternity when you've got that many, I guess, moving. And they're staggering the times, or staggering by a few minutes. They've got, each one has their procedures worked out. So now, they do, if they're going to a band class or going maybe to an art class, to some elective, they may have to break out of that hallway and go to that particular elective. But the movement that we would normally have is, has been lessened a great deal. It's been minimized. So what we're doing is trying to control the movement more at the middle school. The high school is, you cannot maintain static groups in high school. The myriad courses that you're offering with all the different electives, there's going to be tremendous movement. At the high school, we figure we've got about 500 students that have chosen a virtual option. So then, when you take that 500 away from the total enrollment of the high school, then with the AB hybrid schedule, you're cutting that in half of the number of students that will be on the campus on any given day in that four-day period. And on that fifth day, on the Friday, there'll be no students attending class on the campus. They'll be total zooming in. So at the high school level, we can do more at the ninth grade academy in a smaller space in controlling that movement to an extent, because usually what they try to do is to have three basic cohorts on the three floors, so that they take their core areas on that same floor, science, math, English, social studies, NBCA or IBC or whatever the name of the day is for that particular course as it's evolved over the years. And that they would just go to PE or, you know, right there in the gym. But keeping them primarily on that, in that, on that one floor and that one hallway, for the most part, until they had to venture out to a particular elective maybe. On the main side, 10th through 12th, so when you take the 500 students off of virtual, then you cut it in half and then you isolate the ninth grade on one side of the street. The 10th through 12th, the numbers of students on that side at any given time has been minimized. But they will be moving and the administrative team there, I was just talking with them again today, we're in, you know, constant contact. They're developing the procedures of what they're doing to stagger the kids, how they're going to feed them. There's going to be more outside eating than inside. So each of the schools is looking at those particular options. I know at AJ, a lot of the kids are going to be eating, you know, in the courtyard area as opposed to the classrooms themselves. We're going to try to move, do a lot of movement outside. If you notice at the ninth grade academy, we've put that overhang there that will allow more students on that side of the street to have that outside eating. On the main side, we have that covered area as well as all of, you know, a big campus evolved. So we're taking all of those precautions. So elementary is going to be totally controlled. The middle school, there will be more control, but some minimal movement. And then at the high school, the movement will be greater, but the numbers of students that we normally have at any one time will be significantly decreased.
So Jason, can you talk a little bit about what happens in between changing of the classes?
Sure, absolutely.
Like, how does that work?
So at the end of a class, as students are leaving, we are going to disinfect the classroom space, which would be, obviously, the student desks are going to be the biggest piece. First off, there's space to the maximum extent possible. So we're going to have as much distance as reasonably possible in our given framework there. And then on top of it, we're going to disinfect the classroom desk spaces, the chairs, everything that was, you know, a tangible item during that class, of course. So that classroom will be fresh in between the changes or as it's changing, before the next group sits down. And then, once we have students in class, we're going to be working to take care of all of the common areas. So we're going to disinfect bathrooms in every change, right? We're going to go through and make sure, you know, all of those commonly touched surfaces in there are disinfected fully. And then hallways, you know, stairway railings, banisters, elevator buttons, light switches, thermostats, anything that those kiddos are touching or anyone really is for that matter, is also going to be disinfected in that time. So we sort of have a fresh start in between each and every shift of kids.
That can happen in three minutes, it's like a NASCAR kid crew?
Well, the classroom piece is going to be a little bit, you know, it's not going to be difficult, it's just going to have a little bit of adjustment period to make everything happen there, but we will be able to do that. The hallway piece is going to, we're going to have more time, obviously, because once they've shifted, we have the course of a period to take care of that. Not that we're not going to do as quickly as possible, because we want to make sure, should someone have to leave a class, obviously, for whatever reason that's justifiable, that they're walking out into an area that has been disinfected and is as safe as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you ma'am.
I want to just commend Ms. Vouchet and Assistant Superintendent Ms. Lametta and all of our staff, administrators and Mr. Dewey, well thought out plan. But it's been a very difficult thing, I think, you know, and a learning curve for all of us. And I think we all share in many of the concerns that have been spoken tonight and our number one safety is for our students and for our teachers and staff members. I'm sure, you know, this plan will be evolving. That's why we passed that policy earlier to give the superintendent a flexibility to change the plan as we go along and we learn from and monitor the data that may be occurring during the school time. And, you know, I had a couple of questions as far as the procedures, as far as getting on the buses and the procedures for the students as they're coming into the school. Have these procedures been sent to all the parents yet?
The schools' principals are in the process of doing that. They have done it at some of the schools. I don't know the detail of the procedures, but in general, they have. I would have to get for you, I haven't read each and every one of them, but I do know that Ms. Schneider, when we sent out the communication, she went ahead and pushed out each of the principals or administrative teams' communication to the parents. So some may have a little bit more detail than others. I think a lot of it had to do with supply nights and, you know, we're not having large assemblies, we're not having congregating, congregations of any sort. Telling parents that without an appointment, we're not opening the doors to having people coming in, which is going to be a change for parents. You know, that they're not going to be able just to come in and without calling first or making an appointment as well. or making an appointment, as well as anyone who would want to enter the building itself. These detailed procedures with the kids, I know I see, you know, we talked about some of the TRIST people earlier, you know, we talked about Gail and such. Like, I know that Ms. Pritchard has had a group of her teachers in all week, and they've been refining those particular procedures of where are they going to take the temperatures? How are they going to do the breakfast? I know how, she was telling me they're getting off, they're going to have the kiosks set up at the main points of the hallway. The kids pick up the breakfast from the kiosk, they don't even go into the cafeteria, and then straight into their classroom, where their teachers at that point will welcome them and take the checks and those kinds of things. But it's going to be a little bit different at each school, depending upon how the school is physically set up, how the building is set up, and what the best way to maneuver through. You take a school like Shalman High School, which is so large, and the number of entrances and exits, it's a little bit more difficult to manage and how their procedures will go. So as far as knowing what exactly has been told to the parent, they're told that the procedures are in effect, the detail at which, I'm not sure how much detail has been gone into for each, you know, each school as of this point.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. And the, Mr. Dewey, the mist sanitizer that you mentioned at the end, is that something that's just going to go off periodically?
No, it's, it's a, it's a handheld sprayer, is all it is. So it's the same liquid sanitizer that we would use in, in any spray bottle or to wipe down a surface. It's just that the liquid sprayer, or the electrostatic sprayer I was talking about, it's just another way of delivering that disinfectant, and we can do it, when it comes out, instead of being just kind of a spray of liquid, it's more of a mist, and it's more of, like, think more like a Lysol can as it comes out. So it's allowed to dry in a faster time, and it can be tweaked, for lack of a better term, to dry at longer or shorter intervals, depending on what that particular disinfectant requires to be effective.
Well, we all know teachers and our staff members have always had a huge responsibility of safety to our students, and now their, their responsibility has grown even greater. And, you know, we all, again, share in the concerns, and, you know, it sounds like a great plan, and we know that we may have to change it as we go along, depending on what happens. But, you know, you were talking about the, when the children leave the classes, who's going to have that responsibility of wiping down everything? Is it going to be the custodians?
So it'll be-
Or the teachers, or combination?
Combination.
Combination?
Yes, ma'am. It'll absolutely be a combination. There'll be some shared responsibility there, and much like Ms. Votche was saying with entry and exit procedures, it's going to very much be dependent on that school, that staff, and, you know, and lots of different factors on the ground. But it'll be a combination of all those folks.
And, you know, as I stated before, it's a, it'll be an evolving situation. So if it comes to be that we may possibly need additional personnel, even though we have 25% less students, but if we need, say, more custodial help, or more aides in, at the schools to help out, to, you know, make sure that we all stay in as safe as possible, you'll bring that to our attention?
Well, we've already talked about that, and Mr. Dewey is searching for additional personnel as we speak.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. We are in active pursuit of additional personnel who would, who could come in and do things on a temporary substitute-type basis for us, given the situation.
And have you advertised it, or, and when you said in pursuit of additional personnel, how, what, what method has, have you?
Well, we always have a list in, you know, a litany of people who have been on our substitute list and are already approved, and gone through all the necessary background checks and those types of things. So we are contacting actively those people right now, and then beyond that, and once we have a very good picture of how many we do have and how many more we may need, we will, you know, take any and other steps, like you said, advertising and such, to go out and find additional staff at that point.
Okay. I've also talked with Melissa Kirsch, who is, I think y'all know Melissa, who, the old, I go so far back to the CEDA program. It was CEDA, then JTPA, and then WEA, and WIC, and now it's WEOA, whatever, you know, the Workforce Investment Group. And they have a grant, I've approached her for additional personnel as well, if anybody is out of work at this point and is looking for, to work for us in some capacity, feel free to come in, put in an application. So we're searching through those applications. I'm working with Melissa to see what she has in her databank of people who are looking for employment, who could do some of these specific jobs. And we are looking to hire as many as possible. You know, we have to go through the background checks. She has a grant, hopefully, with some of that funding, and then the CARES Money Act, we are dedicating exclusively, at this point, right now, to not only the technology, devices and access for kids, but for all of the protective measures we have to put in and any additional personnel we have to hire. So at this point, I mean, I hate to, I hate to say it like this, just out in public, but anybody's looking for a job and you want to work, you know, at this point, please come in, and I'm sure that we can find something in some capacity at one of our sites, because we will hire additional staff if they're available for the needs that we have to make sure that those safety measures are in effect.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. And again, thank you for a well-thought-out plan, and, and you and the Assistant Superintendent, the administration, Mr. Dewey. It sounds like, excuse me, that you, we, you've tried to think of all scenarios, and I'm sure as we move closer into this school day, trying to get to a normalcy for our students and our teachers, we'll continue again to monitor it and see where changes may need to be. But thank you very much. We appreciate all the additional hard work that everybody's put into it, and all the staffs at each of the schools getting together even before they have to. And I know that we have an additional professional development with our, our teachers even before school starts, and so I'm sure they all have concerns and will be addressing those additional concerns also.
You know, and let me just say this, the, you know, everybody here starting, you know, let's just start at the central office, we have Mary Lametta, our Assistant Superintendent, Leanne Harleton, the entire staff here, our administrators at the school sites, the entire administrative team has been doing nothing but trying to prepare for this, putting our heads together, putting our thoughts together. How can we best serve everyone in the community, our children, our employees, and make it a safe environment for all of us and for our children to learn it? I want to thank our teachers. Look, I know this isn't easy. I mean, you know, and I hate, this is my 50th year in the shape and art parish school system. This has been my life, my passion. You know, we've been through, I'll get emotional here, but we've been through Katrina, and at that time, things looked very, very bleak. We all pulled together. We made it happen. We've had an incredible recovery with that because everyone pulled together and tried to do what was in the best interest of it all. And I want to assure everybody out there, not only our families, our children, our teachers, our employees, you know, we value everybody. You know, I think it's, when people say, what are they doing? I want it to be, they is we, guys. You know, we're all together in this. It's not one group or one person trying to do something to another person or another group. We're all trying to make very difficult decisions in a very difficult environment. And the decisions that we make, we're trying to do what we feel is in the best interest of the community as a whole. And individually, it's going to be tough for some of us. You know, I mean, I hate to mention people, but, you know, Henry talked about his school principal, who's one of my best friends in the world, you know, that I have been friends with for 50 years. We've had discussions on this. We all make our individual choices. We all have to do what we feel is best for ourselves, our family, and our community. And those choices, no one should belittle another person for the choices that they make. So we sit around here, and we're making decisions that we feel are in the best interest of the community as a whole, as we try to look at individuals as well and look at individual best interest. And, you know, we're here for the greater good, and, you know, we, we belabor this. These things and these decisions are not made lightly. So as of this point, we're presenting a plan that we feel is in the best interest of everyone as a whole. And we're willing to make changes as we go along. I know everybody who's sitting around this horseshoe wants to make decisions with that in mind. And if things get worse, and we feel we need to make an adjustment and to change course, all of us will do that. We'll do that because I know we're all good people here, and I think everyone has proved that over, over the years within this community. So please be assured that, I guess, these decisions that are coming out of the central office, as people say, are not being made lightly. And we belabor them, and then we're trying to do what's in the best interest of the community as a whole.
Okay. Thank you again, Ms. Votche, and for all who have belabored all of these issues and concerns. Okay, are there any other comments, or Mr. Campbell?
Yes, I'll try to express, I have sometimes a problem with speaking. You all understand when you get my age. I appreciate your comments earlier, and I too share your concerns. I have four of my family who are teachers, and it's a hard, hard decision for me to sit here, but I appreciate your comment that should something occur, that you will take immediate steps to shut this down if we have to and go back to what we did in March. Not only our teachers, we have cooks, we have bus drivers, we have custodians, even the people who substitute. It covers a whole vast area, and it's difficult for us to sit here and make a decision that would concern each one of these. So I appreciate your statement, and with that, I will go along with what the board, Mr. Hines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, well, again, we thank the administration and you, Mr. Dewey, for helping and guide us along, and we'll see how it goes, and hopefully we'll have a very successful school year as we move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dase. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, or items to be placed on the next committee meeting. Anyone at this time? Okay, and you always have until right before the meeting to add any agenda items. Superintendent's recommendations?
I think we've exhausted those tonight.
Okay. Okay, is there a meeting to adjourn?
Absolutely.
There's a motion by Mr. England, seconded by Mr. Campbell? No, I'm sorry, Ms. Esseveta? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.